Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for August 27, 2025. If you are interested in joining our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticbg@gmail.com. Okay, here we are with the continuation of our match from last time. I am playing the white checkers. If anybody wants to join me as part of the trio, you can just let me know. If you don't want to, no problem, you'll just play as part of the Hive Mind.
Hey, Jason, that would be like joining the losing team.
Right now it would be, yeah. But this game is not going to last much longer.
I know, okay. This is an easy move.
Yep, this is an easy move. Okay, hold on a second. I'm gonna admit somebody new that I don't record, so I'm gonna pause the recording and admit somebody, just a moment. Okay, yes, so I do think this is an easy play. Let me just go ahead and make it, just take the two checkers off. Alright. Alright, and now on the white side, that's gonna be me. Okay, now, one of the things I want to do here is, I think I want to hold this anchor, because there are some rolls that will leave a double shot. For example, 6-3, 5-3, 4-3, well, not 4-3, 6-3 and 5-3 will leave double shots. So I want to hold on to the anchor for that. I don't know if I want to keep a checker out or not. I do have to start worrying about the gammon, so I'm gonna go ahead and bring a checker in. And then I don't think it matters very much with the 1, so I'll do this. Okay, 6-4 for the red team, very easy, nothing to think about. Maybe we'll be finishing this quickly. Okay, again, I'm gonna hold on to the anchor, because 6-2, 5-2, and 4-2 will leave double shots. So let me make the board.
But, but Jason, you will still have a shot if you start moving one of your guys out.
That's right, but I wouldn't get the double shot.
You still will get a double shot, because that depends.
No, I wouldn't have, no, I wouldn't have gotten a double shot on a 4-2 if I had abandoned the anchor.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
I'm holding on to the anchor for the double shot, which, by the way, I've got.
And you're getting it, okay.
Okay, now, I have to think about whether or not to double. Yeah, I have a double shot here, so I hit 20 times. The problem is, I'm not even a favorite when I hit. The opposing team has eight checkers off. So this is nowhere near a cube. I've got a lot of work to do, even if I were to hit both checkers. And I might just miss and get gammon. This would be a terrible cube if I were to send it over at this point, yeah. Okay, so let me roll them. I'm still hoping to hit. Okay, I got one. So I'll hit. Okay, now I got a 4 to play. Yeah, I have a couple of options. I could step out. Or I could hang on to those two checkers back there and hope that I can get a double, hit that other checker. That will be crucial. I don't even really know, so. I think I'll hang.
I would stay behind, I would stay.
I'm gonna stay behind, because I can play 6-2 and still have builders for the one point. I'm not stacking up any checkers. Okay, let me, let me give that a whirl. Okay? I still don't think I have a cube. Even if I hit the second checker, if I hit, okay, let's see, now maybe I should think about.
Did the computer agree that you should stay behind?
Yes. Okay, now, do I have a cube here? Let's see, if I hit, that might be a market loss, because with, with only eight checkers off, if I have a closed board, I don't believe you can take that cube. I may get a couple of opportunities to hit that checker, because I only care about what happens in the next exchange. Well, I don't know.
Jason, I have a question. If you were, if you were to, to queue, offer a cube, wouldn't you be too good to double if you had a chance to close your board?
You already have eight checkers off, so I can't be too good to double.
Okay.
I can't win a gammon, right? There, there's no such thing as being too good to double if your opponent has checkers off. Alright, well, you know what? I don't know, so I'm gonna put you all to the test, and I'm going to redouble and let it be your problem. Okay, so I'm gonna double here, and the Slido is open now. Yeah, let me put the choices intake. Or pass.
Oh, boy.
Ah, see, as soon as Donald says, "Oh, boy", I know I've made a good cube, because if I have to make my opponent sweat.
You made an excellent cube, all your cubes are good, Jason. I would, I would probably pass.
Fifty-fifty on this one.
I'm a chicken.
So far.
See, even if red comes in, unless he does 1 and 6, he would have problems, and white still has two chances to hit them, that extra checker, so I don't like it.
Okay, the Slido is open. I just put in the chat the information on the Slido, if you don't have it. Go to slido.com and put in the code 1296.
Okay, just a minute.
Got a couple of votes coming in.
I knew I should have joined the winning team.
Uh-huh.
I said, I said I was the losing team, but I was wrong.
Well, you know, that's, that's why I hung back to try to get that double shot.
Yeah, absolutely. You were right, you were right, yeah.
I'm still trying.
Okay, we only have three votes. Anybody having trouble with the Slido?
Me.
Having trouble getting on the site?
I'm on the site, it just didn't pick up what you had. And I'll take, now, now we got it. No, we don't.
No?
Yeah, yeah, we do, we got it.
Okay, alright, so Brenda, you were able to cast a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Everybody else able to, to vote? We have six votes, it's fifty-fifty right now, point toss. Alright, I think next vote's gonna decide it. Has anybody not voted? If you have not voted, let me know.
Only six people have voted.
Well, yeah, well, the problem is, it's tied right now. We need a.
How can you see, how can you see how many people have only voted? Oh, I see it at the top.
Yeah. So Michelle, you were able to cast a vote?
I did.
There's seven votes now.
Seven, yeah.
Alright, that's a take.
It's a triad this week.
Right now it's just me. Anybody wants in? Okay, now let's look at, see what the computer says. Double and a really, really close take.
What?
Yeah.
With only a 21%?
Uh, you've got the re-cubed big. Holding, uh, holding a four cube, you, you have some value to that. You don't, you don't usually need 25%, sometimes you need lower. That is a little, that is quite low. Also, your side wins just a tiny bit of gammons, and that, that might be enough to push it over. If you didn't win any gammons, then 21%, this may not be enough. Okay, well. Alright, I missed, so I'm gonna have to start running. Now, this gives, if I run from the 22 point, that gives me 12 numbers to hit that checker. I really need to hit that checker to win. Okay?
Oh, there it is.
Okay. But you're not gonna hit it, are you?
I don't know what I'm gonna do, let me see.
Why wouldn't you?
Why wouldn't you?
No, I think I, I think I am gonna hit it, because once where there's two up. Okay, so I could cover. The problem with covering is that I've got a limited amount of time to be able to hit this other checker. I need, I need that other checker to win. I think, I think I'm gonna hit it now.
Yeah.
Okay, now for the ace. One option, I could slot the ace point, because I, I also really need the ace point to win. And if I get hit back, who cares? Furthermore, getting hit back might be good, also just to recirculate that checker.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and do that. I don't know if this is right. Let's see how I did. Oh, I'm a genius.
No, it's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, blind squirrel finds a nut. Okay, you danced again. Alright, now I'll cover. Okay, so now the thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start looking for big doubles to see how they play. Particularly double sixes. Okay, so if I go here, how do double sixes play? One, two, three, double sixes will play fine, double fives will play fine. This looks like the way to go. I wanna, I wanna avoid potential awkwardness. Okay, 6-4. How is this? One, two, that'll leave a shot on double sixes. What if I do this?
Same thing.
Yeah, I can't avoid the shot on the double sixes. So let, let's go for more flexibility with this.
Would you avoid the shot? I didn't fully, if you did 12-2?
I could, yes, let's see, one, two.
No, you can't actually.
I can't do it, so alright, I'll go for the maximum flexibility here. It won't matter with the, how I play the six in terms of avoiding the shot, it's only being able to play the four that will do anything. Okay? Ah, double fours, one, two, three, four. That's not bad.
Nice.
Hello.
Okay. Two, one, alright, I'm just gonna rip them off.
Um, hi guys, I'm here.
This is so easy.
Yes.
Is the, is the triad two people so far, or three?
So far it's nobody, but we're about to start a new game and we can, we can reset.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, now I'm, now I hope you come in. Uh-oh.
Not yet.
Oh, no.
Yeah, this is not good.
Be interesting.
Alright, I think I'll try to play it safely like this. I don't need, I don't need to take another checker off. I just need to avoid getting hit. This is, this is safer, uh, in case you dance. Or, or not, I guess. Oh.
Ouch. Boom.
Time for a vote.
We're gonna hit, for sure, you gotta come in.
There's only two legal moves.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm setting up the Slido.
The only argument I can think of for 22-21 is it gives us two shots at you if you get double fives. Otherwise, I would want to hang back more, so what are the odds you get exactly double fives and we need that second shot versus keeping one further back?
Uh, the probability is probably around 30%, I think, is how the math works.
Thirty percent that you're gonna get double fives?
Yeah, don't you think that's about right?
Give or take, give or take.
And then Stephen gives another argument to go to the 19 point in case of double sixes.
You, you were joking, right, about the double five?
Yes.
Ah, God, sorry, I didn't.
Well, I guess I, he was. No one's ever accused mathematicians of humor, being funny, Donald.
I was a bit confused. I take everything so literally.
Yeah, I, I suffer from that malady as well, Donald. Yeah.
Especially when it comes from Jason's mouth, I think must be right.
Yeah, well, I, I deadpan everything. Okay, the Slido's open to.
How does 19 help on double six, oh, if we get double six, it's not if he gets it?
Ah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, so 3-1, is that why we're stuck in? What happened here?
Yeah, so we're waiting on the vote, we're voting on the.
The three comes in and hits, and we have two choices for one that are gonna be pretty close, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the voting seems to be for 20 to 19. Okay, so, alright, let's go with that. Alright, but my plays are probably gonna be forced for a while. Let's go back and look at that one. Yeah, see, very close, hardly matters right now. Okay, now this could matter.
Hmm, I'd say 22-17, 19-18, to keep as distant as we can from their plot. Yeah. If he, then if he gets a 9, 10, or 11, um, he jumps over us where he wouldn't if we hung back.
Yeah.
If we do 19-13, on the other hand, he hits us with, um, 14 rolls. Yeah, to be, hmm, you have a point there. Because we want to keep back on the 22 to have coverage in case he jumps over. But also, we don't want to get hit, because we waste a die that could, could be used to hit him instead, so. And, and the problem with 19-13, he hits us with 14 and we have no return shot at him. So the other thing, if we do 20, what you were saying, with the 22-17, 19-18, then if he hits us, we actually have some return possibilities. So I think that's probably, um, I, I I, I think the 22-17, 19-18 seems to make sense for that reason.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the Slido's open, Scott. I think I've got everything in there. If I'm missing a candidate, let me know. Ah.
An opening slider now.
22-17, 19-18, looks pretty popular.
I'm gonna vote that as well, right now, as soon as it loads. So, yeah, it's probably gonna win.
Yes.
There's still a lot of hits, but, you know.
Yeah. Alright, let's see. Uh, four legal plays.
Interesting, yeah, going to the 14.
Relatively close. Four legal plays, all relatively close, but you did manage to find the fourth best play, that's a good trick.
Is that an euphemism for the worst play of all?
Yeah, I, I did that, I did that once, where I had 55 legal plays and I found the 55th best play. It's not a joke, it really happened to me. Alright, I think this is pretty much done, so I, I'm not gonna bother these votes.
Rock and roll.
Yep.
Jason, was that on your first day of playing backgammon?
No, it was not.
Wow.
Okay, alright, good results on this game. Alright, um, let's, uh, who would like to join the triad for the continuation here? Anybody who hasn't done it before would like to.
I'll, I'll join.
Alright, we'll take Donald, anyone else?
If you accept me.
This is Adam, I haven't done it.
Alright, Donald and Adam, you're in.
Adam, we cannot be on the same team.
I know, it's mind-blowing, isn't it, Donald?
Isn't it? It is, it is, alright.
Somebody said traitors.
Stephen said traitor, traitors.
Stephen is not impressed, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, hold on, I'm setting it up there. Okay, so it's gonna be me, Donald, and Adam. Alright, here we go. Uh, next game, alright, so the score now, uh, the Hive Mind is trailing 7 away, 3 away. Okay. Alright, so Donald and Adam, we're the good guys now.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna make the three point, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, 6-4.
Um, I think we make the two point, because we are behind and we need to be aggressive, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Oops, sorry.
Okay. My, my instinct was to just run, but I, I'm okay with making the two.
Alright, the Slido is open, I've got all three reasonable-looking plays. I happen to know the answer on this one, and I think it's not close. Okay, making the two point looks like it's coming out on top. So let's do that, I, I think this one's right. Um, Stephen put in the chat, make the two point match the board, I think that's the right idea. Uh, see there, not close at all. Alright.
So it's because of the board, not because of the match score, is the primary reason?
The map score, this, that would have been right at a lot of different scores.
I'd make the four point here. Uh, but like normally, they, the three, the three plays are very close, but because they are so not close right now because of the match score, isn't it?
That could be, yeah. Alright. Yeah, four point, Donald, you good with that?
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Great, alright, we got a good, good inner board. Okay, 5-3.
Three point.
Make the point.
Three point.
Three point. Agree.
Eight, three, six, three.
Yeah.
Okay. I open the Slido. Yeah, it looks like everybody wants to just make the three point, okay. Um, kinda, kinda matching each other, I guess, um.
Who's sake?
Two-sided, both sides playing a blitzing type game.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Oh, double sixes, oh, piece of cake, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't have much choice.
Yeah.
There we go, looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Long double sixes.
Yeah.
We'll get the cube ready on the next roll, maybe.
Yeah, roll a 5-7.
Ah. Definitely cover.
Yeah, 13-8.
And 6-5.
How about 24-23, with pressure? They have a strong board, um, I'm not sure we should be opening up right now for attack, and they have three builders that they can point on either of our plots, so I think it's too much. Yeah. And he may, yeah, he may actually still run into some timing issues soon, so I, I guess I agree.
Uh, Stephen says in the chat, don't split when they have so many in the zone.
Right.
Right. Slot the five to start the five point.
Okay, the Slido's open. Ready to vote.
13-8.
So here's what it looks like if, if you were to play 13-8, 6-5. Oh, alright, lots of votes for that play, nobody wants to split, okay, let's do it.
But I do want to see what it says.
Okay, I'm, I am gonna, it showed up red.
Wow, okay.
Alright, now before I click on that, I don't want to click on it just yet, because that's gonna influence the cube, so. Now, Adam and Donald, before you, you raced a cube, I do want to point out the score, where we're well ahead in the match. 3 away, 7 away, which does suggest being somewhat conservative with the cube, that's, that's, I just wanted to plant that seed. It doesn't mean I'm saying we shouldn't, but gotta be more careful.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, probably.
Well, the other thing to think about too is their board is very front-loaded.
Very much so, yeah.
And so they, um, you know, if we come in, there's a, if they do hit us, there's a good chance that we'll come in higher on the board and not so far down.
Yeah, okay, yep, all that's true.
If we have a cha, and we have a runner on 13, that's pretty, that, that gives us some flexibility here.
Right. Adam, what's your inclination here, are you?
My inclination is to double.
Okay, and that's even with the score?
Even if they wanna, if they want to play this for the match, I think it's a good game for us to play for the match.
Okay, I'm kinda leaning that way, but I'm not sure. Donald, what?
I, I would probably not double for the reasons you said, because of the score in the match.
Okay.
If it weren't the score, I would double.
So if it was, if it was a equal score, Donald, you'd be interested in setting the cube over?
If it were equal, I would double.
Alright, Adam, what's the fun, what's the fun play?
The fun is to double, but the other thought is that we might want to clear the 18 first, and, and then think about a double. Because a double, it doesn't, I mean, if we gammon them, obviously we win the game. But, or the match, I'm sorry. But if, um, obviously, there's, there's a lot of opportunities for them to redouble us and the whole bit, so I'm okay with not doubling and waiting till we clear the 18.
Alright, let's, uh, alright, I'm, I'm gonna go along with that, let's, let's roll them. See what we can do. Alright. Uh, 6 and 5, alright, let's go back and look at the checker play from last time.
Huh.
Wow, not close.
Okay, interesting.
The splitting was right.
He wanted us to split, huh?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's, that's, uh, I don't, I cannot really explain.
Well, one problem with, with the slot is you're removing that spare from the six point, and that, that means you, you're, you're gonna have a lot of troubles with flexibility after that.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
If there were another checker on the six point, I might say, yeah, go ahead and slot, because then it's doing some good, but that spare on the six point's kind of valuable, that's, that's just one way I'm seeing it.
Okay.
Hmm.
Okay.
No. Could it be that because we, we are behind in the match score, we should play more recklessly or something? That's why we, 25-23 is not as bad as.
I sort of, I sort of doubt that. Uh, I mean, the, you know, this play is winning a lot more games. 28.4% versus 25%, so I kind of doubt the match score makes that much difference on this. Okay, Donald and Adam?
I would bring two down from, I'd bring two down from the 13.
I like that, Donald?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, it looks like a nice play, right?
Yeah, and I think the 18 still acts as, even though it's not an anchor in the board, it's still an anchor. If, if they roll a 1, we, there's, we could use it to be a safety spot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not super concerned about getting hit. Okay, that play? Oh.
Nice. Ouch.
Wow.
13-12 and 8-5 real quickly.
Yeah.
If you're doing it quickly enough, it might work, right, yeah? Um, okay, serious suggestion, 13-12 twice, 24-23 twice?
Yes. Yes.
Advance those bare checkers.
Yes.
Or maybe, maybe 13-12 for the last one instead of 6-5.
Oh, what about 13 to 11? And if they don't hit us in the way, and that, that, that gives us the shot, gives us to cover the five on the next roll.
Hmm, yeah.
I, I like that, we have zero flexibility, though.
I like the 13 to 12 with two, and I also like the idea of the 24 to 23 with two.
Hmm. Hmm. Um.
What, I, I don't want to double dip, but did anybody think of saving the five point, 5 to 3? 13 to 12?
Uh, too passive.
Not yet.
It is passive, it is passive, but, but I don't know, might be good.
The fact that we're anchored means if we get hit is, I'm not a catastrophe, I don't think. I think going to the 11 to cover the five is probably the best, but, yeah.
Okay, the Slido's open.
So Jason, while they're voting, um, I might have missed it, but was not doubling the right play back a couple rolls ago?
Um, uh, yeah, I think so. I, I don't want to click on it, look, I think that would influence us a little bit too much. We'll, we'll go back and look at it later.
Okay, we'll do it at the end of the game, okay?
I mean, it, it didn't show up as a, you know, it didn't light up in color, so we didn't, uh, make a big blunder.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, but for really fast cheaters.
Jason, I don't think you have the move that was.
What am I missing?
So I think what was being suggested was 13-11 twice.
Um. 13, oh, 13-11, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
With one checker.
But with, oh, I thought both, 13-11, two checkers.
I think we need to go to the 23 to.
That would be the whole move.
Right, exactly, and keeping back at the 24.
Oh, yeah, I got it in there now, Rick.
I, I want to go to the 23 to, to threaten their 17 point once they start bearing off. So I think the 23 is better. I'm also that, when they play sixes during bearing off, they are forced to go to the 24, and that might expose checkers. So it's like, has like a kind of a vacuum sucking effect, uh, when you, when you have an anchor on the 23. Yeah, yeah, kind of like, yeah, yeah, I don't know how to call that, but.
Need to elaborate on that.
I know all about sucking at backgammon, so.
Oh, jeez.
Well, somebody voted for the cheating play in it, and it's sticking to their guns. They're, they're not changing.
Donald?
I didn't do it.
Oh, there we go, somebody took it off, alright, we got a tie right now, we need one more vote.
Yeah, so. The thirteen, twelve is seven away from the five, so it would be hard for us to cover, so we just do.
If, if we don't vote, we cannot see. The voting, am I right?
If you are not voting, you can't see the voting, so Donald, get in there and, uh, vote for the cheating play.
For the other team, for the, for the cheating game, okay.
Just cast the vote for the cheating play, and then you can see the votes.
And I see the vote, I, I see now.
We have a winner yet, Jason?
No, we don't have a winner yet, alright.
Come on, Donald, cast your vote.
Alright.
Well. You don't want me, I'm with the other team.
Cheaters versus traitors.
Yeah, I.
Anything is, Jason, I was thinking I would be willing to change my vote to break the tie, but it would have created a new tie.
Oh.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I see. Alright.
I, I think splitting the twenty-four to twenty-three is important. Uh, then, of course, you hit. I don't know.
Maybe you'll split, you're gonna split instead of transferring the anchor.
Oh, this is taking long enough already, don't get into their.
Alright, alright, add that.
I'm just gonna pick one, and I, I.
Yeah, I think that's safer, cause they have twelve in the zone.
Uh, alright, let's go. Okay, uh. Ooh.
Whoa.
Well, I would've gotten this one, I got this one wrong.
Really?
Wow.
Going to the eleven twice, wow.
About that, that's interesting. Okay, well, what's happening?
Wait, wait, go back, let's see how many of the twenty-four, twenty-three plays are the top.
Look, here's one that just flips and doesn't remake the anchor.
Wow, okay.
Oh, that's a weird looking play, you gotta play six to five.
No, no, that, that, that's not right.
Rick is just.
The computer doesn't know what it's talking about.
Exactly, Adam, you got it.
Alright, we, uh, we're definitely.
No, 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 actually, I think, I think it does, because if you transfer from the six to the five, then the, uh, thirteen point or twelve point becomes a direct. Shot to cover the six, so it's not as bad as it looks.
The five.
Yeah.
Not the six.
Yeah.
With a six.
Interesting.
Tough one. Okay, alright, we're definitely not cubing this, right?
Correct.
Serve.
Yeah.
Alright.
Is there exchange, uh, ice wall?
That plays it all, right?
No, seven to one.
Seven to one, really?
Oh, well, oh no, we hit him, sorry, we hit him, sorry.
Okay.
I thought we were playing it safe.
Okay.
Yep, Steven said, and it would've blocked his sixes, had we come to the eleven.
Yeah.
Uh. Jason, did you configure actually not to show the cube, little cube icons when we miss a cube or something, so we are not influenced by that?
Figure it to do that?
Yes. Because it's, I don't remember it ever showing like little cube icons when we miss a cube.
I don't see any cube icons.
I don't see a cube icon either.
I think that's where we haven't missed a cube, I, you know what, Eric, I don't know. Uh, there, there are some various modes, I would have to look into that to see if I could do that, cause I, I mean, that's a really good idea, we don't, you don't really want it to show. That you've missed a cube, because then that influences you the next time.
Yes.
And what is that, what is the sad face next to the double six?
Unlucky.
Yeah, unlucky.
Yeah.
Well, lucky, lucky for the good, good guys, alright, I, I'll put it on this mode, which is not gonna show anything for now.
Okay.
Do that.
So, uh. Because.
Okay.
Alright, so now we need to think about a double here.
Yeah, we need to think about a cube here.
How, how important is a gammon at this point?
Well, I mean. Whether it's. Whether the cube is on two, or it stays in the middle, a gammon is good, if it stays in the middle, the gammon gets us to proper, that's good. And if the cube's on two, then the gammon wins the match, that's the two.
So I, I think.
Problem with the. Cube being on two is that the gammon is less effective than usual, because, uh, like, you need three to win, so. The gammon only gives you one point instead of the usual two. So it's a less efficient than usual, I would say. Yeah. Um.
It certainly feels like it's, uh, this is a cube. Even with the game score the way it is. I mean, there's lot, we have several rolls that would fill in that five slot. We've got the runner on the eleven, we can cover that runner. They still have to come in. I mean, I'm sorry, runner on the fourteen, sorry. So I think it's worth a gammon.
Okay, now.
Not a gammon, a, a double, I'm sorry, a cube, it's worth a cube.
Yeah, I think it's, it's worth a cube, and I don't know what the opponent should do, I don't know.
Okay, now, how concerned are you about the mobility of the checkers on the eighteen point?
Pretty concerned.
Okay.
Which is part of why I think, let them, I mean, if they wanna hit that. Eighteen, then they have to pony up.
Pony up.
Yeah.
Okay, so Adam, you want to double.
Yes, sir.
And Donald.
I do too, I can't believe I agree with Adams for a change.
It's gonna happen once in a while, just.
Once in a while, just statistically, right?
Okay, well, I, I'm not sure, I'll go ahead and be the minority opinion and say I don't wanna double, but I, I see what you guys are, are seeing, so. It's two to one, we'll, we'll send the cube over.
And you just, you're just doing that for smug equity.
Uh, yeah, you, you, you read me too well.
I said, I would knit, is that supposed to be hit?
I said not.
Not, um.
No.
Alright.
Are we, are we voting on this?
Oh, you're definitely voting on this.
Okay.
Fuck.
I, I put the poll up and like immediately, a, a pass came in.
I think. A take, just on the chance to try to get back in this, because there's still gonna be, we're, we're definitely in a bad position, but there's gonna be some volatility.
Yeah. Let me check the match equity if we pass, so if we pass. We have a fifteen percent match winning chances, guys, at seven away, two away. So, uh, the question is, are we better than fifteen percent here? Uh. I think we might have more than fifteen percent win chances here.
And if we win, there's a good chance we're gonna be able to turn the cube.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, so I would take.
Okay.
I mean, it's not just, you, you, you talk about, we're fifteen percent if we pass, but we often also figure out what are we if we win?
Uh-huh, uh, that's true, so if we win. We go to five, and we win simple, we go five away to two, to three away, which is thirty-four percent. So. And we are currently, uh, seven away, fif- two away, uh, three away, which is twenty-four percent, so we, we stand to gain. We stand, stand to gain ten percent. Match winning chances if we take and we win a single game. So, yeah, that's basically it. Um.
And what are you risking by passing?
We are risking. So we are currently, um, seven away, uh, three away, so that's twenty-four, then to fifteen, so we are risking nine percent. So we, if we take, we gain ten percent, if we pass, we lose nine percent. So it's pretty even.
I think you're comparing the wrong number. If we pass, we lose nine, if we take and we lose.
Or, and, instead of being at fifteen, we're at.
Roughly half that, I would assume.
If you take and lose, you're at nine percent.
Okay, so we're risking six.
Yeah, you're risking six.
To win.
Which hand? Okay, so you do.
Oh, yeah, that's so, yeah.
So you do risk divided by risk plus gain. So risk plus gain is sixteen?
Six, sixteen says thirty-seven and a half percent.
Okay, but that's also misleading, because you can re-double very, very easily.
Exactly, exactly.
See, cause that's what you just computed is what's called your dead cube take point. But your cube is very, very far from dead.
Right, in fact, it's almost a guaranteed re-cube under.
It, it, yeah, in fact, you should probably just do your calculation, assuming that you're going to win. Uh, the game with the cube on four.
Which puts it at fifty-fifty, because we would be even in the match.
That's not exactly right, but it's, it's a much better approximation than doing just a dead cube take. So then what's, what's your gain in that case?
Fifteen to fifty, right, thirty-five?
Yeah, thirty-five.
So six over forty-one. Is. Under fifteen percent, which is back to close to where Eric was earlier.
Yeah. Okay, and if the true value is in between there a little bit, uh, probably closer to the fifteen percent. Um. Because you, you, again, you, it's reasonable to assume that you're gonna win, when you win, you win with the cube on four.
Man, guys were talking about. That is just.
Complicated stuff, like, I, I feel like I need to be like a math genius to.
Yeah, that was good math.
Over the boards especially.
I don't know what you were talking about.
Yeah, so the discussion there is just about calculating a take point. I mean, we, you know, if, if people are interested, we could, we could go over this stuff, I, I, I have a pretty good understanding of how it all works. The main thing is. Is, you know, knowing some, uh, match equity values. Okay, the, uh, the slide-o is open, so if you haven't voted, let's, let's pass to vote now.
I, I.
If we're gonna discuss that, which I'd like, I, I have no clue, I can do that math, what I don't know is how to look at a table and figure out my winning percentage.
Oh, yeah.
Can we do that, can we do that at the beginning of next week, maybe?
Yeah, we could do that.
Please, yes, I, I, I would very much like that, to have a, uh, like a lesson on match equity and stuff, how to calculate it over the board, how to figure.
So Rick, I, I think, I think the answer to that is, you don't necessarily have to look at a position and say, oh, I win this. So many percent of the time. You'd just say, well, compared to, you know, when it's zero, zero, my take point is lower. So that means I'm more likely to take than I normally would. That, that's the main way that people do this. Now, there are certain situations where you can calculate your winning percentage, and that happens most often in, uh, you know, bear off situations.
Right.
Okay, the vote is to take, so let's do it, let's, uh, let's take. Okay, now, I'm gonna go back to the regular mode, uh, as on before, and take a look at all these. Okay.
Oh, it does show the little cube icon, that's, that's a shame.
Okay, so I will, I am gonna collect a small amount of smug equity here, forty-three millipoints. But I actually think this is not a terrible cube. Um, because you can, you can get people to, uh, to give up on positions like this. Um, you know.
Some people did. That's what I was hoping for.
Yeah, yeah, so, actually, so Steven points out, it's.
What is Steven pointing?
Jason, you muted yourself.
You muted yourself.
Okay, you got a four-two to play. Okay, four-two for the good guys.
I kinda like eighteen to twelve, eighteen to sixteen.
Eighteen, uh, like this?
Eighteen to fourteen, yeah.
Eighteen, fourteen, sorry.
Okay, so Adam, your idea there is to get off the eighteen point where we're, where you're feeling a little bit stuck, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I like that play, uh, Donald, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think this is the best, yeah.
Uh, there, here's another option.
Yeah.
But, so, yeah, so, so Adam, maybe the idea is to do this now while they're on the bar, and. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I like it, alright, I, I'll go along with this. How'd we do? Oh, we crushed it, amazing.
Good call, guys, good call.
Good call, Adam. Uh, okay. Uh-oh.
Oh, no.
Boy, oh, boy, oh, boy.
Oh, well, enter and hit, I guess.
Yeah.
We, we, we in this game otherwise.
There any other play you would even consider?
Coming on the two.
Thirteen.
You have to count two.
That was the original play.
Okay. Everybody likes this, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh.
Nice roll.
Yeah, let's get out of here, goodbye.
Wow, it's right.
Can we double him again?
Um, thir- thirteen, ten, nine. Seven, I guess.
Maybe eight, six.
Still, like, you got cut off, let's say that again.
Maybe eight, six with the two.
Yeah, 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 sure enough, better, better, more, more builders, yes.
Okay, any other choices?
Steven said twenty-three, twenty-nine, seven.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's reasonable.
I think it's definitely worth considering stepping up in the back, cause you're kinda suffocating back there.
Right.
But then you leave the thirteen exposed. Yeah. And it's, it's gonna be, if we give them a gammon, we lose instantly, so I don't think.
It does duplicate the two, it's cause he can hit eighteen to twenty also.
If you did twenty-three.
Or seven to five, from his perspective.
What happened to no risk, no reward?
Cause we don't have to take the risk now, we, we can take the risk later.
Maybe something for red. Although they're my sworn enemies, uh. I, i- if you, if you move to the twenty, twenty point, you also have a chance to be hit, and then make that advanced anchor.
Right.
Very nice for you to, to have the two and the five point.
Has anybody suggested thirteen, ten, if you don't wanna move the back checkers yet, thirteen, ten, nine, seven?
Yep, that's in the list.
Or I do twenty-three, twenty, thirteen, so ten.
Twenty-three, twenty.
Thirteen, ten, ten.
Uh, that's illegal, that's.
That's a pair of threes.
How about thirteen, ten, nine, or eight, six?
Oh, yeah.
Being illegal has never stopped us before.
No, it certainly has not.
I'm not kidding.
I put it in there.
Thirteen, ten, eight, six is a nice.
Yeah.
Somebody suggested it already.
You should also say the twenty-three, twenty-eight, six. Yeah, okay.
No, I didn't say that, somebody else suggested that. Nah, I didn't say that, somebody else suggested that.
In every voting panel, Jason, you should have a tricky play, which is illegal, and see who catches it.
Where's Tom's fun play?
I think that's the one, that's it, I don't, I wouldn't go twenty three, twenty, because they have twelve in the zone, they are two, three builders.
Thirteen, ten, nine, seven. All right, let's vote. A lot of builders to make some more points.
Vote, vote, vote.
Mm hmm.
Jason, I was, I'm sorry, I was muted, you've got thirteen, ten, eight, six twice, you're splitting the vote between itself.
Oh, yep, 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 sorry. All right, that's okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make a note of that, I, I can, I can add them up.
So thirty four percent for the eight sixes plays?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any more votes? You haven't voted, do it now. We'll do like one more. Maybe one more play. So that's really tied now, thirteen, ten, eight, six is tied with thirteen, ten, nine, seven. Not, not gonna be.
Bill, Paul, you vote, I'll, I'll say the eight, six move.
Okay, we'll do it, thirteen, ten, eight, six. And, ah, stepping up, I'm not surprised.
Mine was.
Wow.
I, I think Michelle had the right idea. No risk, no reward.
Yeah.
But look, uh, wait, 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 go back. The, the winning percentages, like, it wins three percent more, yes, but it loses like, uh, seven, considerably more gammons. Especially like twenty three, twenty, uh, twelve, ten, loses thirty percent gammons, it's, uh, it's ridiculous for, for three percent. So why?
Why you would split that, those two checkers on the twelve, though?
So why is the equity of the third place so, like? Okay, because it loses a lot more gammons.
So Eric, Eric, here's why, because when you win, a lot of the time, you're gonna win with the cube on four. And you don't care about losing those gammons. Uh. That, that sounds like a, a BS answer, actually, I don't know. I don't know what I'm talking about.
The match equity swing of a gammon loss is not that great.
Yeah, that's another thing we'll talk about, you know, when we, when we talk about some match equity stuff.
It's not just, it's partially the equity, partially the fact that it's wasted points for you, you can't get full advantage of the game.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna play, we're gonna play three ones, and then just pick up the dice real quick.
Ouch.
I don't know what to do.
I, I think we forgot to check if eight, six or nine, seven was a big difference between them.
Well.
Uh, nine, seven was actually even better, okay, interesting. I would have.
Eight, six was better.
Yeah, go for errors, but the eight, six was better.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, oh, and I, I, yeah, I was looking at the wrong nine, seven, sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Jason, I like taking it from the eight.
So, like this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that too.
Because that gives us, if, if they don't hit us on the eight, then.
We got a direct cover.
Yes.
Okay, Donald, you good with that?
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Okay, yep.
Must throw a six.
Okay, now, should you consider a cube here?
Hmm, not me.
Not yet.
Not when they can close their board, I mean, not close the board, but, uh, close their prime, six, six prime.
All right.
We can.
I think it's a market loser if we get a six, so I'm.
It's not. I don't even know if we have a good cube after a six, I found well to get with it.
I do want to point out that at this score, you have to be really aggressive with the cube, when you're holding that two cube at seven away, three away, you cannot afford to lose your market.
There's no market to lose in my, in my book.
I think you're right, I think you're right.
I don't believe there's any sequence. Of red getting six, whatever, followed by white even failing to come in. I don't think you have a market, even then you don't lose your market.
I, I agree.
I'm not even sure it's a double. But if it is, it's, you know, it may not, it may not, it's probably still a take. Hey, it doesn't really matter.
Okay, this is gonna, this will be our last play.
Make the, make the bar, I suppose.
Yeah, make the seven.